Call to order the Carney School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Here, we have a quorum.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All in favor? We are going to change the agenda just a little bit. We're going to have our recognition at the end, but we don't need to go through the whole process of changing the agenda just for that. We do, we have no public comment this evening. And next, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. First, I'd like to introduce our new Director of Special Services. Hannah Iverson is coming to us from Green Valley, so we want to welcome her to the Bulldog family. The second thing I wanted to do was just talk about an upcoming agenda item for the August board meeting. So we will have a public hearing regarding a school protection officer, or an SPO. And that just gives the school district the ability to hire someone as an employee. And again, we will provide a public notice in the beginning of August. That hearing will be held in the middle of our school board meeting. And again, at this point in the year, as we look at the start of school, safety and security is one of the things that are top of mind. So we will be having that hearing, and more information to come on that.
Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Post, thank you. Next, we have information items, financials.
In your packet is the final unaudited report for June. We did come in a little higher than we anticipated at the end of June, 24.94%. But with that balance, we also have some reserved dollars, $134,000 for food service we received from the federal allocations. And then another is $29,600 for our basic education grant, also set aside. And then our capital funds project set aside with our bond proceeds is $41.7 million. Does anyone have questions about anything else in the reporting? Our next steps will be in November. You should be seeing our audit report. So we're in the process of finalizing all reporting to government agencies to stay in compliance with reporting needs.
Questions? Bond project update, Ben?
Good evening, everybody. Got a few pictures. Progress is going very well this summer. So picture on the screen that you're seeing, this is the Southview entry. New this week is we got the concrete paving, the sidewalks poured, and we're ready to put asphalt in. Might have got it this week if it wouldn't have rained, but we'll get it in early next week. So the site's getting ready to clean up. The, you can see kind of the canopy area right now. That's kind of, we couldn't start that until school was out, but that's the front entry canopy there. So that's coming together nicely. Let's go to the next picture. And this is kind of a view from the other side. So this is the actual administration addition. It's in really good shape. You can see the final metal panels on it. It looks really sharp. So things are very well there. On the inside, drywall finishing will be complete this weekend. The painter will go in next week, and then it's ceiling tiles, carpet, and ready to go. So things are going very well. On the air handler unit replacement, so we replaced 19 air handler units inside that served the whole building. All of those are up and running currently and under control. So we've taken the temporary cooling out of the school, so that's going ahead of schedule. Very good there. Let's go, let's see what other pictures we got. This is one of the collaboration spaces where we tore the ceiling out to put the big air handler above the ceiling. So ceilings are going back in. We're getting ready to drop ceiling tile, clean up flooring, and good to go. This is a picture over on the right side. This is where we fixed the foundation at the junior high. So we got grass to grow in July, which is unusual, but with the rain we got, that worked out well. So it's cleaned up. Everything signed off there. Good to go. And then last, middle school. So the blue area, you know, in several of these classrooms, we had to go in and put new mechanical closets. So those are all framed up. They're going to get painted next week, too. The units are here. They'll get installed next week, and that'll all get buttoned up very well. So everything construction-wise is going right per schedule. We've coordinated with the school staff on when staff moves in, and everything lines up just how we want it to. So we might, if you're interested in doing a tour sometime before school starts, between maybe the 10th and school start would be a good thing, but don't have to, but just if you're interested. And then the other thing, the other three projects are currently out to bid. So we did a pre-bid walkthrough today. So we went to Dogwood, Carney Elementary, and Hawthorne. And that's so all the bidders can kind of see all the spaces and understand it, so they can bid everything that's needed there. We were going to do an early package and bring it to this board meeting for site work, but some of the site design changed, and we actually don't have to do any of that site work this summer. So we're just going to bring the whole package to you next month, so you can approve the whole thing with the total, total project cost there. And then we would get started, if we got approved next month, we'd get started early September, so.
What was your coverage on your pre-bid?
I don't know. I wasn't there, but our team was there today. I just haven't had a chance to catch up on them. But we've gotten a lot of interest. One of the reasons that we tried to start these projects in September is because a lot of the school contractors are really busy in the summer, and they're looking for places to go in September. So that's why we strategically wanted to start these there. So I think we're going to get really good coverage there.
And then what date are we going to do the tour?
We will send that out in the update. Try to get pinned down some dates for the board.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for everybody to see it. It's going to be a good-looking space.
I'd like to just give Ben and his team some kudos. They've done a phenomenal job in the projects that we've worked on, just on timeline, right? In addition to that, customer service has been tremendous, very responsive to Rebecca's needs, making sure kids, there's been a separation between New Kirk staff and school staff. It's been seamless as far as staging goes, so a lot of great work. And I appreciate all the effort that's gone into that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, we have action items.
Move to approve the agreement with Clay County Children's Fund as presented.
Second?
So we only have one action item this evening. And again, this is a two-year grant proposal. Mrs. Kopp is the one who oversees this particular grant. So you will notice, compared to previous grant awards, this has been reduced. We are tremendously appreciative of what Clay County Children's Fund does for our students. And for those of you that aren't aware, they provide a lot of social-emotional supports. That looks like individual therapy, group therapy, art therapy, music therapy. So again, it's a way to connect kids to school so that they feel relevant, that they're seen, heard, and valued in the school setting. And it's made a tremendous impact. There's a lot of demands, as you can imagine, across Clay County for those resources, which is why we've seen some reduction, although we're, again, appreciative of those resources. We feel like it'll be extremely instrumental over the next two years. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know Jennifer reports this on a fairly regular basis.
So after the, so if I understand it right, so from, this will go from 2024 to 2026 at the number. Is that fully funded? Like, is it, like, we know that that is going to be the number from the state?
Yeah, I don't think they've ever, this is coming from the county.
From the county, excuse me.
Yes. And I don't think they've ever not fully funded what they've agreed to in the grant. Is that correct, Ginger?
Yeah.
And then?
Timeline on when we receive those funds may cross fiscal years.
Right.
So that might be something to be aware of, and that that impacts our budget.
When does the number normally land? Like, do they give you multiple payments, or are we?
We do, we do, we're reimbursed on a monthly, well, roughly monthly basis.
Or month behind kind of thing?
Right, yeah. Services are delivered.
Quarterly, it's usually a month behind, right, Becky?
Okay. Do we know, like, where that number is going to go after this, this agreement? Like, do we have an idea? Is it going to get, like, is it going to continue to shrink? Are we going to have to look within our own budget? Like, what's our?
I would, I would hate to speculate on that. I will tell you, I believe Jennifer was, we submitted a grant amount for comparable to what we've received in previous years, which was roughly around $2 million. And we found out late that the amount was going to be reduced. Again, there's, there's just a huge demand for this type of service and resources, you know, hospital settings. So I can only imagine what the Clay County Children's Fund, you know, the decisions they have to make. Fortunate that this amount of revenue is coming to the schools.
I have one other question on this one. So obviously, you know, we used to get larger amounts on this. How are we going to, with the programs that we use this with, right? How are we going to still offer the services yet, not have the funds to pay for it? Like, are we, are we having to pay her back, or are we?
I believe we've had to be more selective with what, what we're, what supports we're going to be offering for the upcoming school year. We've had to be a little more creative. We've, we have changed from contracted providers that we're using. So we're trying to contract with different agencies in a different capacity. Maybe hiring or contracting with someone to be on staff full-time as opposed to in-and-out services. So, so we've, we've tried to be creative on how we can get the most mileage for the resources we've received.
Are we at any point going to have to think about just giving the, the care, like, the company of care to say to a parent that, hey, you're going to have to go get your own services? Are we at that level, do you think? Or, I mean, I hate to go down that path, but, I mean, like...
Those are going to be more restrictive probably to some.
Right. I will say, even when we, when the threshold was larger, I'm not sure that we utilized the full million year over year, but it was close, right? I do think making sure that we're partnering with parents on what the school can provide, plus wrap services that they can access outside. Our social workers do a great job with that. So, so again, it's just being really intentional about communication, understanding what they have access to.
Okay. Thanks for letting me ask those questions.
Okay, great. Since we only had one action item, board member comments? Oh, we need to vote, sorry. John asked some questions, I forgot we had voting. All in favor? Post, all right. Thank you. Okay, board member comments? Do they have any comments?
I'm just trying to stall for the track team a little bit.
How we doing, Coach?
I'm stalling. Are we good? He's on 291? So it's been a great summer.
It's been a great summer.
And we've had a lot of fun. No. I don't have anything else to say.
For those of you who aren't aware, we're waiting for one member of the track team to arrive. So, yeah, we'll, we'll let Coach... A very important member of the, of the track team. And so, yes, we, we will be happy to wait a few minutes, even if we finish our other business first, so. Because it's important. And I think that most everyone here will wait a few minutes, so. I'll just make a couple of comments, and then we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Earlier this evening, we do quarterly workshops, and some people may not be aware of that, but the board does quarterly workshops, where we come in for different educational opportunities for the board, and the opportunity to maybe dig in on some important issues so that we're, we're better positioned to vote on things when we get to this point of the meeting. So we had one of those quarterly workshops tonight related to board governance and how we conduct our business, and, and an opportunity for board members to maybe get in a little bit deeper discussion about a few issues. And so I want to thank other members of the board for being able to be here for that, to, to do those deeper discussions, and the members of the staff who, who are here as well, because those are, I think, important things to help us do our work. So thank you all for doing that, and thank you, Dr. Miller. And other than that, we have important dates coming up. I'm sure you guys want to hear this, the ones coming back, right? School's going to be here before we know it. But August 8th and 9th, we have our new teacher in service. Also, August 8th and 9th, we have our resource fair. And those just went away. Then we have, sometime we're going to have a tour from Ben. August 12th, the teachers return. August 16th is the convocation. And somewhere in there, we have the open houses. I know, it's not listed, but, and then we have the first day of school on August 20th. You guys can't wait, right? And then August 21st is our next board meeting. Miscellaneous?
So are we going to wait to adjourn and let them do their speed, do their?
Well, we can officially finish the paperwork and then...
Oh, I was going to say, so that we keep it live on YouTube?
Oh, yes, that's true.
You might want to leave it being adjourned.
We can still do miscellaneous.
We can still do miscellaneous. Yes, and then we'll wait.
Okay, so, action for a closed session immediately precede the regular meeting in August, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Roll call, please. No second. Roll call, please.
I'll do this very slowly. Matt Baker?
Yes.
Len Brock?
Yes.
Meredith Cole?
Yes.
John Kern?
Yes.
Bree Switzer? Nick Vasquez?
Yes.
Did you need to do Bueller when Bree wasn't here? Should you, like, ask it a couple times?
Bree Switzer?
Anyone?
Anyone? Yeah.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes. So for those of you who may be watching online, we're going to take a few minutes, but if you want to stay tuned and you want to see the recognition of our boys' track team, please do that.
Do you want to, you want to talk now, longer? No, bust it.
Crawl will be with us momentarily.
That's right.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to stall as much as I can, but thank you, guys, for this evening to recognize this phenomenal season that we once again had in 2024. There's a lot that I can say about this particular season and how it went. And I was just very proud of the way these boys were able to compete through the year. And they also just, you know, on each meet, whether it be a JV meet, whether it be a varsity meet, we just continued to excel and get better all the time. As you guys know, in the past eight years, this is our sixth state trophy. We're runner-up this year, and I'm very proud of, of that. To tell you the truth, coming into the season, we didn't know what type of team we were going to have. We're young, extremely young, which is a great thing. You know, I have a couple of seniors here tonight that, that we are going to, we are going to miss, but going into next year, we are going to be a pretty big force in class four and be reckoned with. And I'm very excited to get to next year. But, you know, this year, we just had a lot of great things that occurred. And winning our eighth consecutive conference championship, that is something that hasn't been done in our conference. It's extremely highly competitive conference in the, in the blue. And Grand View's a tough team usually, and us. And, and to be able to win eight in a row, that's a pretty dang good accomplishment. We won our seventh district championship in the last nine years also. So as you guys know, our Carney boys and girls at track programs continually, continually bring home a lot of championships on a daily, on a yearly basis. And I look forward to continuing that tradition for the years to come at Carney High School. So we have a lot of kids that are missing tonight. And it's, as you guys know, being a spring sport, it's difficult, you know, in the summer to get everybody here. I mean, we've got a lot of guys that were on the team or at a float trip right now with the football team. And then we've got a lot of kids that are at cross-country. I don't even know where they are right now. Anybody know where they are right now?
That's just part.
Yeah, there. Really far away, and they're running a lot. So I always, you know, mess with Coach Roberts because it's like, man, you're a better man than me to be taking them for two weeks. So I bet you, when he comes back, it's a sleep for a really long time. But those kids, you know, Ty Smith, you know, he, he was state, or a state champion in the Discus. He was only a junior, and being able to get him back is going to be amazing. He set the record in the shot put. He took second in the shot put. And we're really looking forward to getting him back, obviously. And just kind of going down the list here to my others that are not here. Jacob Burkhemper. Jacob Burkhemper was a part of our four-by-four third-place finish. And they also set the school record this year. We had several school records this year. And we get a lot of those kids back, and that's going to be exciting. Jacob had a phenomenal year, not only running in, in the four-by-four, but he also ran some four-by-eight for us and also opened four for us. Jacob Dillon. Jacob Dillon, he competed in both the long jump and triple jump at the state meet. He did not place, but being able to get that type of experience going into his senior year, really looking forward to watching him excel next year. Theo Grace, state champion in the javelin. And he also set our school record and tied the state record. And that's, that's pretty dang amazing. And, you know, watching the state meet and being at the state meet and watching those guys throw, you have 16 and the best around. And you, we had two of them. We had Theo, and we had Hudson Best, who's with us. And I'll talk about him whenever we get to that. But, you know, having Theo on his first throw, take, what was it, a half approach, three-step? Three-step, boom, the boy sailed. And I was like, well, that won it. Because, you know, you can always kind of watch the other kids, you know, there's kind of like, oh. I was like, oh, okay, good job. You know, so it was, it was amazing to watch him do that. Riley Johnson. Riley Johnson was a alternate on our relays. And Riley had a phenomenal year also. And get him coming back next year, and we're looking forward to putting together a really nice four-by-18 next year with Riley. Jackson Juve. Jackson was part of our four-by-two. He was an alternate on four-by-two, but he also ran most of our sprints in the open one, open two, and the four-by-one. And he, from the beginning of the year by the end of the year, he had a phenomenal year. And he's having a good summer and looking forward to seeing him excel. Grant Nolan. Grant was, he finished fifth in the 300-meter hurdles. He was also part of the four-by-four team that took third and our four-by-two team that took fourth. Our four-by-two team also broke the school record this year, and we get pretty much everybody back in that one also. Connor's here. Isaac Smith. What a year for Isaac, you know, getting him in from last year to this year and, and the big jumps that he took when it came to the eight, 16, and 32. And he competed at 3,200 meter at the state meet. And he got some really great experience with that. And there he is. Trey Smith. Trey also competed in the high jump. He did not place, but again, he got a lot of experience. So looking forward to his senior year with that. Kale Tuckin. Kale Tuckin, he also was an alternate on our four-by-four team. And, you know, Kale, a freshman, now a sophomore. But I got a lot of freshmen now sophomores that I'm going to be really on this, this offseason and everything. Can't wait to watch them during football and stuff because they're going to be amazing during that season also. And Xavier Weeks. Xavier Weeks is a senior. He couldn't be here tonight. I thought he was going to try, but Xavier's been a part of our program for four years. And he was a part, he was an alternate on our four-by-two team. And we're going to miss him. We're going to miss his leadership. And he did a phenomenal job for us this last four years. Okay. Are there certificates?
Yeah, I got them.
You can talk first, then we can call them up, or you can do it however you like. If you want to call them up and we give them to them as you talk about them, or however you want to do it.
All right, the first young man, Aiden Ariano. Come on up. Aiden Ariano was a part of a lot of different groups for us. He was an alternate on the four-by-four team. He was an alternate on four-by-two, and he had a heck of a season when it comes to pole vault, and looking forward to seeing him do that again. He didn't, he was not happy with his sectional performance, but I was. But, you know, looking forward to seeing him next year. He's gonna do a lot of different things for us, not just that. Hudson Best. The state meet and the javelin, and sectional meet was, was really fun to watch on that, on that side. Hudson was right on that outside looking in, and then boom, he gets right in there and gets in that top four and takes fourth, and gets in position to go to state. Hudson is gonna be coming back and looking forward to seeing him perform in the things that, mostly just javelin. Cole Burnham. Cole had an eye-opening season in the open-one, open-two, four-by-one, four-by-two, and also training him a little bit in the four-by-four. He had, he's one of those kids where, where, you know, his freshman, sophomore, and then his junior year, everything came together, and right at the very beginning even, starting at the Liberty Meet. And it was like, like I said, it was an eye-opener. Like, he ran, I was like, wow, here we go. All right, we got something here with Cole. So Cole is part of that school record four-by-two team, and looking forward for his senior year because he's gonna, and we need his leadership, that's for sure. Sal Di Benedetto. Sal, along with Cole, also is an eye-opener, and it started coming together about three-quarters into the season when it came to his sprints in the 100 and 200. He was also a hun, on our alternate on the four-by-two team, and again, like Cole, these guys are gonna, those two guys are gonna be seniors next year, and they're gonna be leaders of their group, not Sal, sorry. I got two more years of Sal. My bad. Forgot Sal, I thought, I thought you were a little older, but no, I got Sal for two more years, and I'm gonna be looking forward to those kids being leaders in that sprint group, that's for sure. Jacob Dillon. Jacob Dillon couldn't make it tonight. Talked about him. Deegan Knowles. Deegan also was a part of the four-by-two school record, and he was, ran the four-by-one for us, ran the open-one, ran the open-two. I'd love to see him run an open-four, but I don't think he can do it. Like Sal, I got Deegan for two more years. So those two young men are just juniors going into next year. Connery. Connor was a consistent 400-meter runner for us through the year. He was an alternate on the four-by-four. Really looking forward to see how he does in the wintertime, getting ready for the spring, 'cause we need to rely on him a little bit more this year. So Connor ran, he didn't run any, ran, I put you in an eight. Nope, you will. You will. Sam Way. Sam was a sophomore now, but he was a freshman, and Sam's kind of one of those unicorns. I can put him in anything, and he will excel in it. Sam ran the 300-meter hurdles as a freshman, made it to the state meet. He was, he had to run in the sectional meet in the four-by-two, and just on a whim, he had to run it, made me nervous. He did great, moved us on. He can long jump, he can high jump, he can even throw the discus. He can do a lot of different things. So looking forward to seeing what four events that I can put Sam in next year. Our two seniors that are here tonight, Harvey Seong. Believe it or not, this is Harvey's first year of competing, and tried to get him last year, this kid can jump. I was like, ah. So he became a high-jump specialist, and by mid-season, he's placed in at the KU relays in the high jump. He's jumping 6'8". He finished sixth, or fifth? Fifth. Fifth at state in the high jump. And he's a kid that, all of a sudden, he, he comes out for track, and now he's going to Central Methodist, and he's gonna do both track and basketball at Central Methodist, hopefully. And that's quite an accomplishment for him. He, he had no idea how good he was gonna be. One week he jumps 5'8", and the next week he jumps 6'8". I kid you not. That's how it happened. It was 5'8" and it went 6'8". I was like, what? At Staley, it was amazing. He had an amazing year. Wish I could have had him for more. I know Coach Rankin and Coach Haas would have loved to have him for a lot, for more years, but we are glad that we had him for the one, and I can't wait to see what he does at Central Methodist in both basketball and track. Congratulations, and thank you, Harvey. Okay, Brock Kohauer, the one we were waiting for. Twelve-hour shift at North Kansas City Hospital. Brock is going to the University of Kansas. He is majoring in nursing, and, you know, one of these days, I hope that I never see him while he's working, but, but if I do, I'll probably sigh a little bit of relief 'cause I know he'll take care of me. Brock has been a part of our program for the last four years. He is the only Carney track athlete to be All-State for years with a top-four team-state trophy. So I don't know if you guys have seen the picture of him with all the trophies, but it's a great picture. Brock has been consistent for us for the four years. He's a part of that four-by-two school record team, four-by-four school record team, but he's a kid that since his freshman year has been on all those relays, doing all of them, and then this year he finally got to get on that podium in the open 400 and be All-State also in the open 400. Like Harvey and, and Brock, they're gonna be missed for the contributions that they did to this stack, this state team, this track program, and they're gonna be missed for those, for those things, but just most importantly, they're gonna be great men, they're gonna be great fathers, they're gonna be great husbands, and I can't wait to see what they do whenever they grow, get all grown up and they just come, hey, Coach Kroll, what's going on? Just hopefully not in a hospital. Hopefully not, you know? So thank you, thank you all, thank you, thank you guys, the school board, for everything that you do and our support that you give to us, our central office team, what they, all the support that you guys give us, our athletic director, David Schwartzenbach, who gives us all the support that I need, okay? And I cannot say enough about our assistant coaches. Our assistant coaches are phenomenal. We have the best in the state of Missouri, and I will debate that with any head-track coach in the state of Missouri and in Kansas if they want to, because we are loaded, and it shows. We have just a lot of accomplishments and success, and, and all of it is not about me, it's about what those assistants do, and it's about what these kids do on a daily basis. And ain't me, it's them, and it makes my job a lot of fun. Makes it a lot of fun. So thank you all.
She can hammer, she didn't adjourn it. She can hammer if she wanted to.